Dan, the Plaid of the Deacon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the sixth meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, February 8th, 2001. A thought for the day from Henry David Thoreau. Explore new worlds within you, open new channels of thought. Madam Clerk.
Under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills repayment.
So moved, second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved, second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
There are no advances today. Requisitions?
I will move with the exception of 356, 353, and 401. On 401, I would like to see us contribute $1,500 instead of $2,500. That's the flowers for downtown Alaria. Last year, we gave $1,500, and I don't understand why we're giving $2,500 this year.
Sorry. I'd like to comment on flower baskets. Those are the ones that would surround the courthouse. There are seventeen poles and thirty-four baskets, and the total cost for that is... The request from the City of Alaria to participate in their flower planting program is for seventeen poles and thirty-four baskets for a total of $2,550. And that is just the surrounding courthouse and the two poles or baskets in front of the administration building. And I was at the mayor's state-of-the-city address this past week, and he commented on the fact that they're already planting for this year and the positive comments that had been received, not only by him but by me, about the look of downtown Alaria and these baskets. And I just think it's a small amount to pay to beautify the downtown where we do work, and I think it's a very worthwhile project. So I'm in favor of the full amount.
Why is it $2,500 this year compared to $1,500 last year?
Roxanne has the commission.
This is your copy.
Yes. While we're discussing that, I'd also like to ask you what 353 is. Oh, that's...oh, okay.
I didn't have it on that page.
Oh, it is on...
Oh, wow. Was it 401?
Yes. The flower basket program.
Betty, do you know what the difference is between last year and this year?
I don't. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I think that they asked for a like amount last year, and we only allocated the $1,500. I think there was quite a bit of discussion last year. We weren't sure where they were going, and I think that Roxanne...I'm not sure who went down and counted the baskets. We had, I think, an inordinate amount of discussion last year about how much we should allocate. And I just think that that's kind of our portion, and it beautifies the properties that we presently own, and I think we should participate with them.
Well, I don't know. I think, you know, with all the discussion we've had on the Justice Center, pennies make dollars, and dollars make thousands, and it goes on to millions, and I think we should be conservative.
Yes, yeah.
And we're still contributing the $1,500 that we did last year, so there shouldn't be any less flower baskets out there. So I'm just sticking with $1,500.
Well, and if we're going to talk about items, I'd like to discuss 387-01, which is our membership to NACO. And I was not able to find the requisition in Board Business. I looked, and I couldn't find it. Roxanne has been able to locate it. And I'd like to know, this is being proposed this year because it's my understanding that you're supposed to be a member of the NACO board.
Correct.
And I wanted to inquire if you in fact are.
Well, I will be if we are members of the board.
And will you be going to the conference in March then?
I'm not certain if I will. It depends on what we do with this.
Well, if we approve this, will you be going to the conference?
No.
That's my question.
No, not in March.
They have other conferences during the year?
Yes, and there's going to be one in Pennsylvania. That one's in Washington.
Do you know when the Pennsylvania date is?
Uh, no, not off the top of my head.
Well, you know, I fully support the fact that we should be involved in NACO. I don't have any problem approving the membership to NACO, but I also think that we should be good neighbors here at home. And I think that contributing $2,550 to the flower basket program is a small price to pay. I've long wanted us to even do more on the side down here with planting flowers and stuff. And I think that it's important to beautify the house where you live and work.
What was the total project in the flowers and baskets? I can't remember what he said. No, Mayor Gray.
Oh, I don't have that. Do you have that for the whole of downtown Alaria?
I don't think it has. I don't think there are a lot of streets.
There was quite a bit of communication from the administrator to them, and it included all that background.
Pardon me?
Are we down to 353?
353 is the...
The flowers are...no, the flowers are 401.
And 353 is a consulting services for our healthcare program with a grant firm. It's a blanket purchase order. So it's allowing up to $5,000 for that.
Okay. And we have 401, which is...
The flowers. And 356, which is consultant.
Those services have already been performed.
The services for Clemens has been performed?
I believe so.
And this is after the fact?
I believe I'm correct. If you look at the requisition, I think it's for two...
Where do we stand? Is there a motion or not?
She made the motions. With those exceptions.
How long do we sit until we wait till there's no second? Do we have a timeframe or...
No. I'll second the motion with no exceptions.
Any more discussion?
Pardon me?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Is there any further discussion?
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye with a note of exceptions.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye with no exceptions.
Mr. Moore?
Aye with no exceptions.
Okay. Travel expenses.
So moved.
Sorry. Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Discussion?
None here.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
We'd authorize various personal actions as indicated on summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
I have one question. Does this include the Job and Family Services Department? Mr. Foulton?
It does not. I was instructed that you...the board wanted to be and discuss that. It was put in business last week, and I was asked to take it out. And then we were going to discuss it this Tuesday, and this Tuesday's meeting got canceled. I don't think the Commissioners have had an opportunity to discuss it.
Thank you.
I'll so moved.
Can I see the summary? Listen, I don't think this was in here. Okay, thanks. Well, okay. Yeah, that's all done. Thanks. I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye. No on number one.
Okay. We'd authorize the following salary increases for personnel within the Avon Lake Municipal Court. Paul Kidderis, bailiff, biweekly rate will increase from $258.46 to $276.92. Melissa Dunham, clerk of courts, biweekly rate will increase from $515.38 to $584.62. These above increases are effective retroactive to January 1st, 2001, and these amounts do reflect the county's two-fish share.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
We'd authorize the following dates as Lorraine County Public Employee Days at these various municipal amusement parks. SeaWorld, one-day event scheduled for Saturday, June 30th, 2001. The cost of the gate will be $19.99 versus the $33, which is a savings of $13.01. Proceeda Point, one-day event scheduled for Sunday, July 29th, 2001. The cost of the gate will be $26 versus the $39, and it is a savings of $13. Dover Lake Water Park, one-day event scheduled for Saturday, August 18th, 2001. Cost of the gate is $10.95 versus the $12.95, a savings of $2. And Six Flags, Jawa Lake, one-day event scheduled for Saturday, September 1st, 2001. Cost of the gate is $15 versus the $34.99, which is a savings of $19.99. There will be no pre-event ticket sales. Employees only need to present employee identification at the group sales booth, and admissions are cash only. These discount programs are available at no cost to the employer and are not subsidized.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need to advertise for bids for the following community development block grant-funded projects. The first one for the Eaton Township Elevator Project, estimate of cost $64,000. And for Huntington Township Restroom Renovation Project, estimate of cost $16,000. We need to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram on February 13th and 20th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd to approve change order number one in the amount of $3,832 to Be Mechanical and Electrical Corporation of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Lorraine County Correctional Facility Emergency Generator Replacement Project to repair leakage bushings on the existing 2,500 KVA transformer and to cover the costs to remove the existing concrete foundation. Our WL Architects has reviewed and recommends this approval, and we need to authorize the present to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve and enter into the following contracts with the Lorraine County Job and Family Services. These are purchase of service contracts. The first one with Techno Vision Video Services of Cleveland, Ohio, for the production of two videos on the subject of domestic violence as part of the Family Violence Networking Initiative. Amount of contract is in the sum of $3,000 and is effective February 8th, 2001 through June 30th, 2001. The Action Center for Learning...Early Learning Incorporated, Alaria, Ohio, for the purchase of publicly funded childcare services, effective retroactive to February 5th, 2001, expiring February 4th, 2002. And Amendment Number One for the Child Daycare Contract. The amendment is for the purpose of updating childcare service fee schedules. All other items in the contract will remain unchanged, and this contract will expire April 30th, 2001.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Issue notice to proceed letter to Allied Construction Group of North Olmsted, Ohio, for the Children's Services Third Floor Restroom Renovation Project, effective February 12th, 2001. Contract was awarded by Resolution Numbers 01-51, adopted January 18th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd advertise for bids for the...I need to add this language, for the disposal service at the One Day Litter Collection Event, which will take place from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon on Saturday, May 19th, 2001. Like to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on February 16th and 23rd, 2001.
Well, this is the One Day Litter Collection Event. It's also Pride Day. Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Can we have Dan explain a little bit to the public what's going to take place on Pride Day?
Sure. Mr. Billman? Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dan Billman, B.I.L.L.M.A.N. This is an annual event that has been taken care of by Seventh Generation before, and because Seventh Generation is no longer in operation, we're taking it over this year. The event cost is about $28,000, of which ODNR supplies us with a grant for this day. I'll give you some cost figures from last year that we had. Our disposal cost was about $17,000. Ad costs are very high, which includes flyers and getting the message out to the community, which is about $90,000. We collected 90 tons of litter in bags last year. Forty-nine tons of bag litter, nine bag litter, and 11 tons of recyclables. We have about approximately 2,000 volunteers during that day, and out of that, there was about 190 groups from around the county that participated in the cleanup day. You have any questions that I can answer?
Now, you might just clarify for the public's information, ODNR, Ohio Department of...
Ohio Department of Natural Resources. That's where we get the grant from. And we've been getting it every year, but Seventh Generation has been doing the program for us, but this year, we're doing it ourselves in-house.
Thank you, Mr. Billman.
Thanks, Dan.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize the appointment of Emma Elberd Elbarado as member on the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health to fill the expired term of Donald Warfield, who has resigned. Term will be effective February 8th, 2001, expiring June 30th, 2002.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to instruct the county administrator to solicit proposals for our computer consulting services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I'm not in favor of hiring a consultant to do this. I believe we have people in-house. We have a person here that can probably do this if we were to hire some assistance for her. And I looked through the certificates that this woman has, and there's a lot there. I think she can do this. And before we decide to hire a consultant, I would like for us to at least give her the opportunity to try. And I don't know really, you know, what are we expecting of a consultant? Other than to go over the contracts and probably the vendors or agreements, and I think we can do that in-house.
I think we're just asking Jim to get some consultant proposals, right? We're not deciding on going with a consultant yet, are we?
That's what...that's why I'm asking.
Commissioner, I was taking a note. I wasn't paying attention. I apologize.
We're just giving you permission to solicit proposals, correct?
Request from Falls is qualification, yes.
Right, okay.
For a consultant?
Yeah. We're not hiring a consultant. We're looking for proposals.
I know, but are we better off to hire a consultant than we are to hire someone to assist the person that we now have that would be less expensive than consulting?
It's not costing us anything right now, so I'm all for looking and see what a consultant can offer.
And what are you going to do, advertise?
It doesn't require advertisement. It's soliciting proposals.
Right.
I mean, in what way are you going to solicit?
Well, most likely, if we go out for RFPs, we'll just look in the Yellow Pages and declassify it for people that do this type of work. I don't really have a definitive answer for you. Presently, we're using some people to do part of the work that has been discussed. Obviously, they would be given an opportunity to demonstrate their continued capability in those areas. But we would generate a list of firms, and most likely, we'd get those also from our current data people to let us know who they think in the market could possibly...
What are we expecting from the consultant?
Some recommendations. I think about setting up an IT department for the county, and the delivery of computer services throughout the county has been a matter of discussion for quite some time. And I think we need to have a proactive approach, and I thought that this might be an assistance for us to in fact do that.
I think if we were going to do that...Karen already works with the other nine computer people from the other departments, and I think they have a good relationship. I think that they should come up with some ideas of what's needed in the county, and we've got a data board, too, and we should involve the entire data board, which is...includes these nine people and other elected officials. And I think that they should have some say in this. I've contacted Kihauga County, and their data person, their data people are under the data board. And it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. We can have our people under, you know, in our own department, and they can all work together. So I'm not saying that I feel it should be under the data board, but I am saying that whoever we hire should be knowledgeable and should be...have a good rapport with the other people and the other elected officials. And we already have that in-house. All we need is some assistance for this person to do more, free her time up, and so that she can do other things. And I think that's beneficial, but I know that if this is what you want to do, just to go out and...
Just a starting point.
Get RFPs and find out, you know, what the consultant will do.
Right.
I can understand that, but I would like for you to also look at our in-house personnel.
I think that would be part of what this consultant does, is it will it not?
Well...
Look at our needs for staffing such a department.
I had understood that to be one of the components that we would be asking them to review and make a recommendation on. So that is one aspect of what we would be requiring, yes.
Thank you.
I don't think that takes a genius to understand what we need there. We need assistance for the person that we have. I don't think we need to pay a consultant to tell us that this person needs help. I'm sorry.
I don't think that's all that we're asking a consultant to do, though, Commissioner Vassie. I think that there are some other aspects of it, and I think that it would be good to involve somebody from the outside who is not an employee of the county to look at the overall program and make suggestions to us. It's up to us whether or not we implement those suggestions and how we do it.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
No.
Okay, approve and enter into the addendum of contract between the Board of Commissioners and political subdivisions or various Lorraine County agencies participating in the county's joint self-insured healthcare plan. This extension of contracts will be effective retroactive to January 1st, 2001, expiring December 31st, 2003.
I'll so move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Comments, Mr. Prades?
I have nothing today, thank you.
Okay, Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Innis?
No report.
President's report.
Gee, since we've met twice this week, and I'm really glad to be feeling better, I have no report.
Commissioners report.
I just have one thing. Bill Ogilvy sent a copy of a letter he sent to the state requesting 2.3 million in aid for dislocated workers. I think the board should send a letter and support Bill's request.
Would you like to make that in a form of a motion?
I'll move to send a letter supporting Bill's request.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Was that the end of your report, Commissioner Vassie?
That's all I have, thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that then and state that the Commissioners have sent a letter to the governor regarding the proposed freeze on local government funds, and we have included this letter from Bill Ogilvy because it outlines very clearly the conditions of Lorraine County, some of Lorraine County's employees at this point in time. So I'd like to make note of that also.
Any other Commissioners report? Oh, business? We have a Lorraine County sanitary sewer plant update that's been submitted by Ken Carney, the county engineer. That was dated February 2nd, 2001. Mr. Carney is requesting a resolution to enter into agreement with K.E. McCartney to commence with Phase 1 in the amount of $18,900, which will be paid from the county general fund that Mr. Carney sent.
Mr. Carney is here this morning, and he has sent several pieces of literature to the board. Would you like to have him speak?
Yes, please.
Would you come forward, Mr. Carney, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
At today's date, I've received responses to your questions, Commissioner Vassie. Hopefully, you have those this morning. You were concerned with phasing and additional costs incurred once Phase 1 would be completed. The response I have is that the intent of Phase 1 is to review the existing sanitary sewage report, the one we have dated in '62, and locate all the current facility plans and mapping available, and bring together in a cohesive package to determine what the final scope of services would be. This is basically a data collection of everything that's happened in the last 38 years. We anticipate two phases on this project. The data collection, which is what we're seeing today, and the final report. So the costs associated with the final report can vary widely depending upon what's determined under Phase 1, what sort of data we get. Now, remember, this is '62. This is your active sanitary sewer facility plan. It does not have the Phil Mariana Plant. It did not have the French Creek Sewage Plant. It has no relations to the expansion of all the neighboring Alaria's expansion. The capabilities, we need those numbers. So what you're seeing before you is the cost incurred for that Phase 1. There is no Phase 3, 2, and 1. 1's what you have in front of you.
Right. Phase 1 is $18,900, correct?
That's correct.
My question was, do you have an estimate of what Phase 2 will cost? Because once we go through Phase 1, we're almost forced into Phase 2, and at this point, we won't have an estimate of the cost. So they can come in here and say, okay, $50,000 now, and it could be a $20,000 project. That's why I'm asking, can we at least get an estimate of Phase 2?
And my response was that the costs associated with that final report, which is the second phase, varies widely depending upon what's determined under Phase 1. Answer to your question is no. You won't have that number today. I won't have that number until Phase 1 is done. We're collecting data, information, existing features. Then at that time, we can come up, we'll receive an estimate of what's needed to be done. We don't know what needs to be done at this point until we get this Phase 1 completed.
But this firm has done this type of project before. Can't they give us an estimate? But this firm has done this type of project before. Can't they give us an estimate?
I would term that a guesstimate. You're not going to get an estimate for this. My estimates are within 10%. I'm not going to be able to give that to you. These conditions over the last 38 years vary widely.
Other questions by the board?
I have none. Thank you, Ken.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Carney was here a couple weeks ago and pointed out that this type of a study was one of the recommendations from the comprehensive land use planning process. Does the board wish to take action today? Do you want to take this under advisement?
I'd rather take it under advisement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other old business?
I have none, thank you.
Pending issues? Resolution to award bid to National Paper and Packaging in the amount of $63,302.06 for the purchase of toilet paper, trash liners, and paper towels for the Job and Family Services Sheriff's Department and Administration Building.
I'll so move.
I'll second, but I'd like some discussion on this. Jerry, I have a question. In the past, and I don't know if you can answer this or respond, but in the past, what we've done is split these bids, like if National Paper is lowest on, say, trash liners and the other bidder who was Moke Sales, if they can come in less on paper towels, for example. Can we take the paper towels, give them to one, and trash liners to the other? We've done this in the past, and it's my understanding that we can continue to do this, but I need to hear it from you.
I did it six years ago, and when I did it six years ago, there was debating amongst Moke Sales again, and they didn't wipe the idea that the bids were being split up. After that, I never split them up after that point.
Well, I don't know about that, but I've heard from Moke Sales, and she didn't debate it. She asked that it be done this way because they're right here, they're local people, they don't charge interest, and I don't know, National Paper on their invoices has 10 days, 15 days, then so much interest. If we can give it to our local people and if we could split it, I'd prefer to do that.
I would also like to interject that perhaps we ought to bid these on a line item instead of in a bulk, and then we can pick and choose the lowest bid of any item as opposed to giving one lump sum to either company and/or, I think it ought to be on a line item.
And Moke has been very fair with us. When we can't get the product on time from the other company, they're right there, they're a couple blocks away, they run it over, and we run over and get it. They give us the same price as what the low bid is anyway, whether they get the bid or not. And I think it's kind of unfair that they don't get the bid, but yet they'll sell us the product for the lowest bid cost. Jerry, can we do that? Can we break these items out?
We can certainly set up our bid process for doing that. It's my understanding that if I saw the correct documents, that with the one proposed split, National Paper and Packaging is still the lowest bid irrespective of how that's split up.
On all products?
And, you know, my advice was that we cannot, we cannot append a local preference to a bid project after it's been bidded. We would have to do that initially in the bids, and we did not include a local preference in this bidding process. So my opinion is that we cannot award this bid pursuant to any kind of local preference.
Okay, I understand the local preference, but I'm asking if we can split the items by the lowest cost. I understand it was bid, like trash liners, toilet paper, hand towels. Can we take the line item and the lowest bid on that item?
Well, I haven't seen the actual bid specs, the way they were set out. I would have to look at those before I could tell you that.
I think we can do a number of things in the future, but I don't think that we can impose new rules and regulations on an old bid package. I think that's what Jerry's suggesting to us.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And I think that we've also received some SOSs from our maintenance department that they need to purchase these items, and I really think we need to move forward at this point in time.
Well, they've been going over to Moke's now for this, and my concern is, you know, we keep giving like, this is $63,000. A company, a small company, can employ people, and they can lose jobs if we give this type of money to people that are out of, companies that are out of the county. $63,000 could be possibly three or four jobs in Lorraine County.
No, I agree. I think that's discussion number two, though, isn't it? Underpinning issue?
Well, I don't know. I'm still on this one, and I'm really concerned about it. So from what I'm hearing, though, I'm hearing that we have to award it to an out-of-town company.
No, I think we're, until we discuss number two, policies of the board, I believe, is the best bidder, and I think that's what we have before us, correct, Jerry?
That's correct, Commissioner.
To cut it, I mean, I think we all, three of us, believe we need to keep our business in Lorraine County, but-
Yeah, I understand that, but we're on number one right now. We didn't complete that. What are we going to do with that bid?
Well, there's a motion and a second, and we're discussing, so it's up-
Okay, let's vote on it.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
We have to have it, so aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay, second amendment. To establish a local preference policy for all bids, which will be given to vendors and contractors that have an established principal place of business defined as a business with a significant economic and physical presence in Lorraine County. The principal place of business must have been established at least two years prior to the bid opening date. The bid shall be preferred as lowest if their bid does not exceed by more than a specific, and we need to determine this percentage. The Board of Commissioners will consider the local preference only upon determination that its application does not impair the competitive integrity of the bid process.
Mr. Cordes, you've put this policy together on behalf of the board?
It was a combination approach with Mr. Innis and Ms. Newton from purchasing. I don't want to take all the credit and of course, the desire of the board to keep their money here in Lorraine County, which is commendable if nobody else says so, I will. I'm recommending a 3% preference with a cap of $10,000 so that we can keep the competitive edge in the bidding process. I believe those numbers are fair, and they will give small companies here in the county the needed edge to compete with bigger companies outside the county. Thank you.
So the cap is $10,000 or $350,000 total purchase price? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
So I believe, were you done?
No, that's what I was trying to figure out yesterday when we talked.
They would lose the advantage after $350,000.
So any project over $350,000 would not have a local preference policy on any bids?
Correct, sir.
Mrs. Golfski, the Director of the Job and Family Services Department, has a question. Would you come forward, Mrs. Golfski?
My name's Mary Legolski. I'm Director of Human Services, G-O-L-S-K-I. Because our funding is at least 80% federal dollars and maybe the remaining part is state dollars, and then there's maybe 1% county dollars, the federal requirement is that we're not allowed to limit where we get the lowest bid. So could we have Jerry look at your proposal as it relates to our agency? I agree, I think it's a great idea, but I don't want to end up in an audit exception down the road.
So can we just put a clause in here omitting the agencies that-
Federal agencies.
Federal agencies or agencies that legally cannot do this?
Right. Obviously, we would have to comply with any other laws that are involved, and Mrs. Golfski is right, excuse me, yeah, when we're involved with federal dollars or even state funding, we would have to comply with those situations.
So we can just put a clause in here in compliance with the law?
Thank you.
And also, what about this line item, Betty? You were discussing that with Yvonne, separating line items on those other issues you're going to-
Yeah, I make notes that those that go into the split at the end of this year when I go off a bid, line item.
Okay. This proposal says the bid shall be preferred as lowest. It doesn't leave any option to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. Shall is mandatory.
Would you prefer may?
I would. I think we have to look at each individual circumstance. I don't think we want to create rules and regulations that might be cumbersome for us in the future.
Okay, I agree.
I think we have enough to contend with. Are there any other questions about this policy?
No.
Is the board ready to add?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
And also, last pending issue, to award bid for the demolition of property located at 215-219 Court Street in Alaria, Ohio.
This is the proposal from Bender Construction to demolish the properties. We discussed this, and we had some comment at the last board meeting, and we have an opinion from the prosecutor's office that said the commissioners could waive this irregularity and nonetheless award the contract to Bender, the irregularity being a perceived policy regarding tax delinquencies. And the issue is that Bender Trucking was the lowest bid, and they have, are current, I understand they're current with their tax issues before the county. So does the board have any comment or questions on this matter? How would you want to proceed?
I would move to award it to Bender.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay, new business?
None here.
I have none.
Public comment?
We have a public hearing scheduled for 11 o'clock and another continued hearing at 11:30, and at 11:45, we have presentation by Debbie Moore, the General Manager of Lorraine County Transit. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on subjects other than these that are upcoming? Mary Legolski. I will, I will. I'll do it again. Thank you.
It's my day for talking. I'm here to kick off our local Project THAW, which is a heating assistance program that the governor spoke about in his State of the State address on January 24th. Yesterday, we handed out approximately 10,000 applications. We guesstimated that there'll probably be about 13,000 households that will be eligible for Project THAW. It's any household up to 200% of poverty. The applications will be available throughout the county at the Horizon Activity Centers in their four locations, two in Alaria and two in Lorraine, Community Action, Heartland Circle in Wellington, Oberlin Community Center, Salvation Army in Alaria and Lorraine, El Centro, Office on Aging, Catholic Charities, Northeast Social Service Agency, Neighborhood House, Urban League, our agency, and the employment network. Plus, we've asked the libraries and the health departments to hand out applications. So there is a press release on the back of your minutes. Did you, were you going to read that, or did you want me to read that?
No, I think you should, as long as you're there, and give the phone number, too.
Yes.
So that maybe we could have it across the screen when this is aired on TV for the viewing public.
Okay. Project THAW will be, will provide one-time assistance of up to $250 to eligible households to help pay their extremely high home heating bills this winter. Lorraine County residents with income up to 200% of the federal poverty levels will be targeted. Project THAW will cover all heating fuels, including natural gas, home heating oil, electricity, and propane. This program is being funded by the state TANF monies for families with minor children. For individuals, the governor has requested money from the state general revenue fund, but as of yet, the General Assembly has not appropriated the money. Applications will be available at different locations throughout the county. This program will be advertised beginning this weekend in local newspapers and on the local radio stations. If you have questions, the number to call is 1-877-935-5437. Okay? Do you have any questions about it? We still, we asked for a million dollars in our county. The program runs between now and March 30th. Everything has to be paid by June 30th. The money will be paid directly to the gas company or the propane company. It will not go to the client. It's going to be first come, first served. We'll be date stamping all the applications, and when the money runs out, we will have to deny applications.
Are you saying that we do have a million?
We've, we've requested a million dollars for the families, and we've requested a million dollars for the single adults, the elderly population, but we have not received the dollars as, as of yet. So we're just, we will just be housing the applications until they come in. Okay?
All right. Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other public comment to come before the board at this time? Does the media have any comment this morning? We have a full house here. We have two local newspapers and the radio station. Is that a third? I'm sorry, we have three, three local newspapers. You're sitting on the other side of the post. Seeing no one wishing to address the board this morning, I will stand in recess until the 11 a.m. public hearing.
Excuse me, could I have a board correspondence?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I will move the reading be-
Sorry.
Say, I forget something. I'll move the reading be waved. Thank you, Roxanne. Okay.
Just a seven-minute break. I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seven minutes, right?
Be back around.
I'm going to run over to the bathroom now.
You keep drinking all that water.
Formal 11 a.m. hearing. Our community development director has asked me to announce that there is a 7 p.m. meeting next Thursday, February 15th, at Clearview High School regarding the study being made by Nowaka, et cetera, on the commuter rail issue. Lorraine County has two lines, one that goes into Lorraine and the other that goes into Alaria. Mr. Twining informs me that the Grove Site project in Lorraine is a front-runner, and we may be buying with the project in Lake County, so that a good turnout of support for this issue would be beneficial to our county. So I am making this announcement at his request. Thank you, Mr. Twining. Madam Clerk, would you read the issue regarding this public hearing, please?
Okay, public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 1.68 acres in Alaria Township to the city of Alaria, Ohio. Attorney Garrett Murray is acting on behalf of Robert Lesher, the agent. Petition was submitted to this office on November 27th, 2000, for this proposed annexation. The petition was filed with the county auditor and engineer. The engineer reviewed the accuracy of petition and map, and by report dated November 22nd, 2000, the engineer indicated no discrepancies. The land is adjacent and contiguous to the city of Alaria. Alaria City Council has adopted ordinance number 2000-259 dated December 18th, 2000, setting forth services to be provided to this property if the annexation is granted. The commissioners, by resolution number 00-962, adopted December 7th, 2000, received petition and map, and scheduled this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, anyone who would like to make testimony, have a question answered, or make any comment is asked to stand and be sworn in by our Assistant Prosecutor, which is part of our procedure here for public hearing issues.
Do you swear or affirm that statements are submitted to the truth if you pronounce something out of word and without legal law?
Garrett Murray is the attorney representing the petitioners. Mr. Murray, good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chairman, my name is Garrett Murray, and my address is 120 East Avenue, Alaria, and I represent Robert G. Lesher and Patricia Lesher, who live at 41289 Griswold Road, Alaria. We're here today asking and requesting for an annexation of a 1.68 acre parcel from the township of Alaria to the city of Alaria. The property is located south of Griswold Road. This is Griswold Road. It's a short distance from Leona Street. Across the street to the north of our property, this is my client's property, to the north of my client's property is the Pandy property, and this area, which has diagonal lines, is the property that the commissioners approved for the annexation back in May of the year 2000. So he's bounded on the north by the Pandy property, which is in Alaria. He's bounded on the east by a bright and easy car wash. He's bounded also on the east by Speedway Gas Station. He is bounded on the south by Great Lakes Broadcasting, and the, this is all commercial property. The lines, the property lines for my property in connection with the corporate line for the city of Alaria is that the city is bounding it on the south, on the east, and on the north. So this represents the Alaria City property line, corporate line. Then the corporate line goes up to the north. This property that we're talking about today, this territory, is my client's residence. They, the house was constructed in the 1930s. They've lived there 16 years, and the reason we're here today is to ask for the annexation so they can upgrade their property. They have an antiquated septic tank system, and they would like to attach to the Alaria City sanitary sewer. The Alaria City sanitary sewer is right at their Easterly property line. It'll be right here. It's also on the south side of Griswold Road. Their property is on the south side, and the sewer comes directly to their property line. The lot size, it's 142.70 feet in the front. It has a depth of 452.60 feet, and it's currently in the township and its own commercial. The property to the east, to the north, and to the south is also a commercial property. I have filed a transcript with the clerk this morning, and yesterday filed a transcript with Mr. Innis. with Mr. Ennis, which indicates all the documents required in an annexation, the petition, the notices, the engineering's, the engineer's letter, the hearing date notice, the newspaper publication, the ordinance by the city of Elyria as to the services that the city will provide this parcel. And so, I do hereby certify that all the requirements of law regarding annexation, specifically Section 709.033, have been complied with. I was back here in, in May for the annexation of the Pandy property, and I understood at that time that the Elyria Township trustees, at that particular point, indicated that they had been talking with the city of Elyria regarding the extension of sewers into the township without annexation. And I noticed this morning on your agenda that they are asking for the commissioners to assist them and the city of Elyria in reaching some, some settlement regarding the extension of sewers. I would say to you that as of this date, as of back in May of 2000, nothing has been concluded, and apparently conversation is going on. But it is my client's best interest to proceed with this matter now, and sanitary sewers cannot be furnished to my client by Elyria Township. The city of Elyria, by ordinance number 93-45, prohibits the extension of sanitary sewers outside of the city of Elyria. And I have brought with me today a copy of ordinance 200259, which is part of the transcript, which indicates that the city of Elyria would provide services to my client's parcel, police, fire utilities, sanitary sewer, and garbage collection. And that was passed on December 18th, 2000. As you know, the, the rule of law in annexation is whether the general good of the territory sought to be annexed will be served if the petition is granted. As in many other annexation cases before the commissioners, the availability of a sanitary sewer to, to my clients is certainly for the general good of the parcel. They will be able to replace an antiquated septic sewer system with a modern one. They will be able to upgrade and improve their property, and incidentally, they will also be able to improve their standard of living. Briefly, Section 709033 of the Ohio Revised Code, which was enacted in 1967, substantially curtailed the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners in annexation proceedings. Section 709033 establishes some specific standards to be applied by the board to the evidence before it in any proceedings for annexation. And it grants to the board to make only those factual determinations specifically called for that statute. And, and that statute calls that the petition contains all the matters required in 70902, the notice has been published as required by Section 709031, that the subscribers of the petition are the owners, and they are a majority of the owners of the territory sought to be annexed, and that the municipal corporation has complied with Section 709031 by indicating by resolution what services they will provide. Lastly, the territory is not unreasonably large, the map is accurate, and the general good of the territory sought to be annexed will be served, we feel, if the annexation is granted. As I've indicated before, certain court decisions limit the specific areas that I've mentioned. They indicate that the focus will be for the general good of the territory, not of the property that will be left behind if the annexation is granted. So, that effect is not the focus of these proceedings. The desires and intentions of the sole owners of the property as to the good of the territory sought to be annexed must be given greater weight and consideration than those of other residents in the township. In conclusion, the, it is the desire and intention of my client to, that their property be annexed to the city of Elyria, and that they be serviced by the sanitary sewer of Elyria. Also, the general good of this territory sought to be annexed will certainly be benefited, and it will be good of the territory if the property is annexed. And so, we respectfully request that you approve our petition for annexation to the city of Elyria. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and for stipulating to all those sections of the code. I do have one question. You mentioned an antiquated septic system. Is the property owner under orders from the General Health District to replace their system at this time?
I don't believe that's the case, no.
Will they be replacing them, or are they just gonna disconnect and leave it?
Pardon me?
Are they just gonna disconnect the system?
Yes, and then, and then attach to the sanitary sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Are there any Elyria Township trustees present who wish to make a statement? They called earlier, the clerk said, and, and I believe asked that their letter be read into the record. Was that the request?
No, they just said they weren't going to be able to make it.
Well, they're not able to be here, but I, I think for the record, I would like to read into the, the record their request. It's dated February 5th to the Board of Commissioners. It says, "The Elyria Township Board of Trustees has had several meetings with Mayor Grace of the city of Elyria pertaining to the extension of sanitary sewers into Elyria Township. The city has undertaken a study of their sanitary sewer system, and the mayor had indicated a willingness to extend sewers into the township if adequate capacity exists. The trustees also attended a meeting with Elyria Council, and they were also receptive to the idea of extending sewers into the township without annexation. The commissioners have had several annexation petitions of township lands brought forward within the past year, with another case pending on February 8th. We request assistance of the county commissioners and county engineer in our desire to extend sanitary sewers into the township. The Board of Trustees had a preliminary discussion with Mayor Grace pertaining to the establishment of a JED area over the general business zone lands along Lake Avenue and Griswold Road, as shown on the attached sketch in yellow. We would be happy to meet with the commissioners and the city to assist in moving this project forward, and it's signed Elyria Township Trustees Rick Hotman, William Holtzman, and Rob Shitower." And with this letter came a large map with the area outlined that they are speaking of. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition who would like to give testimony? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this annexation? Roxanne has provided this note that the board has 90 days from this hearing, which would be May 9th, 2001, to make a decision. What is the pleasure of the board? Do we have questions, comments?
We don't have to take the 90 days, do we?
No. That's the timeframe.
So, I would just move to approve the annexation.
I'll second.
Discussion?
None.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Unfortunately, I will vote aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Our next hearing is at 11:30. We have about seven minutes. We will try to be prompt at 11:30. Well, ladies and gentlemen, if you would take your seats, please. It's 11:30, and at this time, we will have our continued public hearing regarding the proposal to annex approximately 595 acres in Amherst Township to the city of Amherst. Marcia Collette is the agent for the petitioners, and I see Marcia is here this morning, and I believe that, was it you, who had requested the hearing to allow some testimony today or not?
Yes, please.
Okay, would you come forward, Marcia, please?
I'll be very short, I promise. I think we've addressed about all the issues there are to address. I know there's been some discussion about postponing the decision of the commissioners or possibly postponing this hearing on the annexation. And as agent of petitioners, I'd like to tell you that we do not object to an extension of the hearing, but we do request that a decision be made very soon. Simply put, the petitioners are growing extremely impatient. They want to develop their commercial property, but they can't do so until the sewer matter's resolved. Now, there's concern that the turnpike entrance will be held up until the sewer, sewer issues are resolved. As you're aware, the sewer line has been in place now for years. We're not blaming anybody for this situation, and I would like to say we do appreciate all the, all the good work that the county, the cities, and the township have, have performed, especially in the past several weeks. If Lorain does not want the sewers, we understand that the city of Amherst is ready, willing, able to provide the sewer service. We've been informed that it can hook up to, hook up a sewer line within a year, and that it will have sufficient capacity in approximately two years. Its costs are competitive. On behalf of the petitioners, therefore, I request that the commissioners extend the hearing date if you feel that appropriate, but please, if you could simply extend it for just a few days or perhaps a couple of weeks, and I thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Marcia. Does the board have any questions for Marcia? For, for your benefit, I would like to read a letter, and for the public, a letter addressed to, to Mr. Cordez, dated February 5th, 2001, from Daniel Castragano, who is the Acting Deputy Executive Director and Chief Engineer of the Ohio Turnpike Commission. The letter says, "This correspondence is to confirm our telephone conversation of February 2nd pertaining to the above referenced project. The construction plans for the interchange and toll plaza are complete. The plans for the toll plaza utility building include a connection to the sanitary sewer on State Route 58. Inasmuch as the sanitary sewer is not yet operational, the commission is unable to obtain a permit to install from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. It is requested that you keep me informed as to the status of the sanitary sewer to avoid further delay of this project." Additionally, Mr. Cordez, Assistant Prosecutor Gerald Ennis, County Engineer Ken Carney, and myself attended a work session of Lorain City Council this past Monday evening where additional questions were asked and answers were given regarding the proposal to the city of Lorain. And they have a meeting scheduled for February 12th, this coming Monday, and they have asked for a special call after the committee meeting, which would enable them to vote on the proposal. I would like to extend that information to you at this point in time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ennis, should I ask for other public comment?
I think we probably want to get an indication from the township and the other side if they're willing to consent to continuing this. I don't know if their council is here. I know Mr. Urick is here.
David Urick, Amherst Township trustee is here. Mr. Urick, does the township have any problem with the commissioners extending the hearing?
No, the township would prefer that they, it would be extended. The council had an inquiry, had another commitment, and this line would be proper to begin here. My understanding, it would possibly would be a, would have to continue anyway, so the township did not have their council come up with it. So, it would be in the interest of the township to continue.
Thank you, David. Thank you. And who else should be asked? I'm sorry.
Does anybody have an objection?
Does anybody in the audience have an objection if the Board of Commissioners continues this hearing until March 1st? If not, I will move that we continue the hearing until March 1st at 11:15. Is that the time, Mrs. Blair? Okay.
Will you be here?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
None.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. I will declare this portion of the public hearing concluded then. The only other item left on our agenda is 11:45 AM presentation by Debbie Moore, General Manager of Lorain County Transit. I believe Debbie is here so that we could proceed, even though it's not the magic hour 11:45, mainly because this isn't necessarily a public hearing, but a continuation of our meeting. So, Debbie, if you'd come forward, please.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Moore, MOHR, and I'm the General Manager for Lorain County Transit. And I'd like to say thank you for asking us to be here today. We have some people in the audience, some of our board members are here, Herman Larkins and Lyle Jamison, Mary Butler, and then we also have some friends and supporters of transit. The reason why I'm here, and I'll, I'll be very quick, is that we had submitted our budget request in November, and basically, what it boils down to is we had asked for $1,537 to continue our expanded service, which we started in August. And just to give you a quick update, that program is, the expansion is going very, very well. Fixed route service has increased 59% in four short months. And what that tells us is that the service was placed where it needs to be, and that people are benefiting from it, and I thank the commissioners for that, because you did approve that. We're also asking for additional $576,000 to go into our second-year plan of improvement on the fixed route service right now. And what that would do is improve again on the fixed route service with a high priority on establishing a route in the Avon, Avon Lake area to serve the industrial parks, Manco, Avon Commons that's coming up, and that entire region. And then dial-a-ride service, which would give us a total request of $2,113,000. And that's what we're hoping that the commissioners will, will assist us with, so that we can better meet the, meet the transportation needs of the residents of our county. So, that's very brief, but what we're looking for.
Well, I appreciate it, because I think I, when I first got here, I wanted to at least sit down and meet with you to understand the, the system and to see what services you did provide and the budget itself, so we appreciate you coming in and talking to me about that, so.
Does the board have any other questions?
No, right now, oh, I'm sorry.
Debbie, are you exploring any other avenues for funding?
We're continuing to apply to the Federal Transit Administration and the Ohio Department of Transportation. We still receive those monies. Remember, we no longer get the operating money, so the portion, the money that we're asking for is to just cover our operating expenses. The rest, we have covered through other areas. And of course, we do collaborative efforts. You know, I believe there are a lot of things going on throughout the county. The cities, townships, and villages still continue to give us an allocation. We receive money from the elderly and handicap program on a state level. We're still receiving funds through NOACA, so...
Is that on here, Debbie?
If, well, if you look at our, our budget sheet, you'll see the cities, townships, and villages, the Fairbox revenue, that money all goes back into direct service. We do have some transportation service agreements, advertising revenue. Those are all other sources of, of money that, that does come into the system, and it, it all goes to provide direct service. So, those are other sources. If you're looking at the federal grants for operating, it says zero. That's why we depend solely right now with the county commissioners, because we no longer get those operating dollars.
That's something I can't understand. They'll give you $1.2 million to buy new buses, but yet they won't give you the money to operate those buses.
Well, that's a challenging component, for sure.
Federal government keeps changing.
Yeah, keeps changing buses, a new one every, every year. You can go buy some more and add to the fleet.
Well, actually, our vehicles, we usually keep anywhere from five to 10 years. What we're doing right now, because of your help, is expanding to better meet, meet the county needs. So, so the vehicles, we, we keep those anywhere from five to 10 years.
How many do you have now?
Right now, our fleet is 33.
So, right now, we have no service to the Avon Commons and the industrial parks out on the east side of this county, correct?
That's correct.
And with all the new jobs and economic development going there, I think it'd be best to have some form of service there.
Can you route some of these 33 buses in that direction?
We can use some of those vehicles if we have the operating money to establish a route.
Well, can't you just... Well, can't you just redo your routes?
Well, not with the existing routes that we have now. That's what we did last year. We went from five routes to 13, and we took the old routes and ripped them apart and, and rerouted them in other areas. And so as far as using the existing routes, no, we can't. That's why ridership is up 59% because of where those routes are. If, if we were to try to stretch those routes, then we go back to what the problem was initially, where it's taking people two to three hours to get from one side of this county to another. So if we did that, it would be the expense of the progress that we've made in the past five months. But a route is definitely needed in that area.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on this proposal before the board at this time?
My name is Joe Furcona, I'm here.
Joe, would you come to the microphone, please? It's easier for the television to pick you up.
My name is Joe Furcona, I'm representing Lorraine County Community College. I coordinate several programs that deal with workforce development issues, particularly dealing with low-income students at the college. One of our programs is a new program. We are requiring a work-based learning or co-op experience for all of our students. Without the bus service, it presents a problem for those students of ours who can't afford transportation to get to a work site. First of all, they have to get to the college to their classes, and then beyond that, we are hoping that they have the public transportation to get them to a work site. So we are very much in support of the transit system request. They have done a great job for us getting students to our campus and, and helping out the workforce development issues of Lorraine County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to comment?
Hi, I'm Doug Wilber, General Manager of WOBLO, and then I also volunteer quite, quite a bit for Lorraine County Transit. And over the past year, I've watched Debbie and her staff do a yeoman's job, increasing ridership on Lorraine County Transit through the, the fund, the funding established by the county commissioners at the end of '99. I think that what they've been able to do is attain a critical mass in transit. Debbie's, Debbie's challenge has been how to, it's, it's walking a fine line between, or balancing between having enough routes and having the routes served, served people quickly enough. As she said, there was no way to be able to transport people so that they could take these buses to jobs if it was going to take two and three hours to get to the job. That's, and I think that that's what she's continued to be confronted with. She's got a, I'm very impressed with, with the routing that she's done at this point. And I think that Commissioner Moore is very, is, is correct. There needs to be more transit service to the eastern part of the county, and with all of the industrial parks and with the growth in Avon and Avon Lake, there needs to be service provided out there, and I don't believe that it can be serviced by just expanding current routes, otherwise, as Debbie said, you're going to be right back to where you were, where it's going to take an hour to two hours to get to a job.
Thank you, Doug. We have a couple of speakers, so we're being ladies and gentlemen, waiting our turn. Thank you. Good morning, Reverend.
Thank you very much. My name is Gerald Johnson Evans, I'm a minister in the community. The problem is with the increased costs of gas. As you know, there's a problem in California already. And also, low-income people are unable to get to point A, point B because of insurance costs of cars, because of may not be able to drive and things like that. The handicapped people and the poor people who have access to go to Avon and get, get good-paying jobs so they can pay taxes. And this is, this is a quality of life issue. It's about people beginning to be mobilized and moving up in society rather than stuck in, stuck on the bottom end of the totem pole. And we need an outstanding transit company to operate, to get jobs. When people come in, when, when companies come in and check on, they check schools and transportation, those are two things. So I really support that you be kind and generous and support the Lorraine County Transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Evans. Mr. Bowdler, retired Lorraine County Transit member as of last week, I think.
Certainly apologize for getting up here and speaking, but being the past chairman, I still feel a particular little bit of ownership in this, this whole thing, and I did want to make a couple of points. About a year ago, when we went through this whole process of losing our funding for operations, we went through this whole thing where we asked for a million dollars first off last year, and just to keep our existing system the way that it was going. And we certainly presented to you that we wanted to expand our service to better serve the community, and we asked for an additional million dollars. So what we're asking for you to appropriate here at, at this point in time is really no more than what you appropriated last year, but because we were able to do some, what I feel are some, some really good, physically responsible type of things, like work some of the capitalization of the maintenance program into our, our funding so that we could pay for some of the operations cost through our, our capitalization money. And because we took a long look at the routes that we structured and we didn't start them till later on in the year, we were able to save about $500,000 of that from, from last year and still increase our ridership by a dramatic amount. If you, if you look at the ridership, things that we've been sending you over the past five or six months, you'll, you'll see that they dramatically increased over the last five or six months. So basically, we're not asking for really a whole lot of an increase in what we were appropriated from last year. We hope that, of course, by redoing this, that we probably won't spend all what you appropriated, but we certainly think that this amount that we're asking for is not over and above what we're going to actually use and be able to do for getting the whole new structure in together and getting that new route to Avon Lake and, and building on the, the additional dial ride, which there is a big need for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mary Butler?
Thanks, Mary Butler, speaking, B-U-T-L-E-R, and you all know me. I make presentations here often. This is time for transit, and I'm going to address my remarks to both the fixed route and the paratransit. The fixed route, I've ridden on all of the types of transit, and I do that periodically, not because I absolutely have to, but I like to do it to see how things are going. I've been on the board now, I'm in my last year. I finished out someone else's term, so I've been there for seven years. I'm in my eighth year. I started riding the bus eight years ago, and it seemed every time I rode, of course, there was much less service, but every time I rode, there was a problem, and I would always report the problem. I have ridden recently many times, and there are no more problems. If there is something that goes slightly awry, it is dealt with immediately, and the provider of the transit that LCT contracts with is very receptive to any situations that might occur. I guess I'm representing not only people with disabilities, but older people. And if they don't live within, say, a block of where the transit is, they would find it almost impossible to get to the route, to be able to take the fixed route. Therefore, they must depend on paratransit. And with this amount of money, there would be an increase in paratransit. I know a lot of the seniors feel that there is not enough transit in the county for them to be able to get to the grocery store and the medical appointments and the other places that they absolutely have to get to. It's not for fun, it's necessity. So I would ask you again to look at the budget and to remember the people that you are providing a service to. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
My name is Lyle Jamison. I've been on the board, probably a pioneer in this, in this deal here. And over the years, we really have increased our ridership and trying to help the people of Lorraine County. And I don't have too much to say, other than I've been on the board with several CEOs, and Debbie has done a real good job of bringing us up. Every year, we seem to be gaining. So I hope that, that commissioners will concede to grant us the money that we need to increase our ridership in the future. So I guess that's all I got to say, that I've been privileged to be on the board two different times in my life, and so if I can still help, I'll still do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Is there anyone else who wants to address the board on this subject? Tom Wersh, Avon City Councilman.
Yes, I, I came here to listen and to learn, and as a typical politician, I always have to have something to say. I'm kind of impressed by the fact that for many years, people didn't have any reason to come to Avon, and now things have changed out there. I think we've been a pretty aggressive community in regards to attracting industry and commercial development. Our, I know from when I was mayor in 1988 until now, our, our assessed valuation has grown from about $93 million to over $400 million, so I think we're, we've become a real asset to the county as far as tax base and stuff like that, and being involved with the planning commission, you know, there's a lot more to come, folks, and it's going to be an asset to all of us. Multi-million dollar projects coming down the pike. So I think we're an asset to the, to the county. I think we're doing a good job of our planning, and as I said before, people now want to come to Avon where they were asking where it was before. Cogga County kind of hates us, but that's life, you know? So, so your consideration in this and, and letting the remainder of the county take the benefits of the jobs that are being created out there, I think will, as I said, will be an asset to the county, be an asset to the commission, and also be an asset to Avon that we can provide, because we have the jobs out there, we need to get people out there, so whatever consideration you have would be appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman Wersh. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? The request before us is for $2,113,000. As Ms. Moore pointed out, last year, fiscal year 2001, the amount approved by the commissioners was $2,107,372. So it's a very slight increase that's being requested here. And at one of our earlier meetings in January, we approved the first quarter of allocation to the transit board, so. Are there questions by the members of the board? Well, in, in that case, I will move that the Board of Commissioners allocate the $2,113,000 requested for this year, taking into consideration what we've already appropriated, and adjust that so that equal monthly payments are made to the board.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yes. You know, Ms. Moore was here Tuesday, and we talked about the Justice Center, and here she is on Thursday asking for money when she knew that we were going to look at our budget and review the budget. And I think it's a little inappropriate to do this right now when we're reviewing the budget. I think that, you know, this is not something that's detrimental, that can't wait, and I think that we should wait until we review our budget. We've got a major $50 million project that the whole county's talking about, and I think that we should wait until we look into, to the whole situation before we make a decision.
Well, I think that's good wisdom. Commissioner Vasey, I would also like to point out that this request was made last year in November and probably earlier.
But it seems kind of strange to me, excuse me, but it seems kind of strange to me that Tuesday we made a decision to review the budget, and the same week on Thursday, we've got this request before us here, when we haven't had the opportunity to review the budget.
I made a request to review the budget of the Justice Center. That's all I was worried about.
I was talking about the entire budget, and I thought we agreed to do that.
I was more worried about the budget than the Justice Center. I don't think I was, and the budget, whether or not we can afford it, right, John? I mean, I saw you snuck in, I might let you get away without saying something.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the, I saw the end.
No, no, I was just, now my, the only discussion I had is whether or not we can afford it, and that's, I believe, is next Thursday's discussion. Is that correct?
I, I think the comment was brought up about reviewing the entire budget. Now, whether the board totally would want to do that or not, that's totally up to the board.
You gotta give us some numbers first before we go that route, don't you think?
I'm sorry, if I could just hear what the proposal was this morning, again, I came in. From the LCT, was there a specific?
Yes, there's a dollar amount, $2,113,000. It's an increase of $576,000 over what was in the original appropriation for their purposes. And Mrs. Moore pointed out that last year, we granted them $2,107,372.
Okay, yeah, this is good. There is $1,500,000 appropriated on a scheduled payout amount. If there is a hundred, a $576,000 proposal increase, or proposed increase, I would suggest at least waiting until we do review the Justice Center. Obviously, the $576,000, if that would be approved, and I'm not saying it would, would impact, or, or could impact, well, whatever would be available for operations and maintenance of the Justice Center.
John, do we have $576,000 of unappropriated monies at this time?
Yes, we do.
I'd also like to thank Avon for finally stealing business from Cogga County.
You know, I appreciate the service that the transit offers, and I appreciate you wanting to expand it, but we also, I hope that you understand our problem here with the Justice Center. And this is a mandated service. We have judges that are going to go in there, it's mandated for us to provide these services. And though you're doing a great job, I, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but I, you know, and Debbie, you've heard me say this before, please look in other areas for funding, too. You're talking about the other municipalities here, and what I see, $25,000, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what the county is providing. And the county provides mandated service to the entire county. So I'm just asking once again that you please look into other areas for some additional funding also.
If I, if I may add to, Commissioner, again, just from your budget director's perspective, I'm not an advocate for or against this proposal, I want to make that clear. I'm not the one obviously making that decision. The only point, again, I'm making is that it would be wise, in my opinion, to review the entire picture first, and then, of course, if it would appear feasible, and the board would so decide to give either the full $576 or some portion or whatever, then obviously that would come out of the studies that are done for the Justice Center and other areas of expenditures, which I am reviewing. So again, I, I'm not an advocate for or against, simply saying that for $576,000, in my opinion, if, at least temporarily, until we finish the entire review, might be wiser to wait till.
And we still have a question of the train depot? I mean, are you going to come back?
Yes, the FBO and some others.
Next month and send me $5 million to, to remodel the train depot? It, it's getting scary.
I don't think we're going to remodel anything from here on out, we're going to make sure we can afford it first. I hope that's what happens.
In my comments on Tuesday, I, I indicated that I was not ready to withdraw all funds from other programs to put them towards the Justice Center, and I believe last year, Ms. Moore came before us with a three-year plan, which we asked her to do, and I am very pleased with the, the increased service that they've been able to initiate because of the monies that the commissioners have appropriated to them. I think this is an economic development issue for our county, and I think that we have to look at a wide range of things, and so I'm, I'm willing to proceed, voting with the motion that I made. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
In our good conscience, I have to vote now at this time.
I believe that concludes our business for the day, so I will move adjourn.
I'll second.
Mrs. Blair? Aye. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
We adjourn.